People that are working for you there. You should all have copies of the reports that we sent out a couple of weeks ago. And just to give you a little bit of background, we won't spend so much time on all the details. It's obviously a comprehensive report that you have. We came out in early fall last year and did some site visits. Over the summer prior to that, some data was uploaded that we needed to do the analysis. And then over the next several months afterwards, when we did that, the chief was very gracious to continue to provide us with some additional information. So some of the report, some of the detail that's in the report is stuff that we grabbed from our analysis that we did late last summer and in early fall, and some of it is updated. That's what stuff that came afterwards to that. So you'll find a mix of that data. We think that we've got it pretty consistent through the whole thing, but effectively, that's the scope of what it all is. The report itself is not, actually, it's quite comprehensive, but the presentation is not as comprehensive. We're going to try to hit the highlights. I just want to go through a few slides just to kind of set the picture up, and then we'll go into some of the findings that we concluded throughout the retire report. The purpose of the report was really to focus on whether or not the 2080 agreement that two communities have with each other is working. And if it's not, what needs to be done, or what are the options to do? And if it is working, what is it that we would make better than what it is? And real quick, I'll jump to the end here and say your 2080 agreement is working. Right off the bat, it is working. There's room for improvement, for sure, but even though we're going to show you an option about dissolving the agreement, it's not a recommendation from ours because what you have is working and it's working well. The report that you have, we started with the evaluation of current conditions. What we did is there's really three large sections to the report. The evaluation of current conditions is what sets the baseline for understanding who you are right now. If we're going to know whether or not you're going to go in the future in a certain direction, we obviously need to know where you were right now. And so the first part of the report, which is pretty comprehensive, is an analysis of the fire department organization. It's not analysis of the two communities. It's an analysis of the fire department and the way they function. Then we do some benchmarking. We do some national standards and compare it to your fire department to see how they perform against national standards. We do some analyze against their practices. I will tell you, in this section of the report, especially when it comes to actual times, response times, times on the scene, how long it takes to roll out. Some of the data that's in the report is going to be questionable because at the time that we did the analysis, we began to learn as we looked at the numbers that the numbers were not aligning with the actions. In other words, a report that says that you're going to see in there that shows the average time that it takes for the fire truck to get to a scene is 12 minutes, national standard on the maximum is nine minutes. We did not see anything in our practices in looking at that explained why there was a 12-minute response time. And so what we concluded, and we began to look into it, is that the data that was given was questionable, and the chief was not even aware of it at the time, that there were some integrity questions with the data. So we'll talk about that in a little bit. But be aware of the fact that some of the analysis or the benchmarking that we have is a hand question. And then the last thing was we talk about future delivery system options and strategies. What are some of our findings and recommendations? And then what do we recommend going forward? Evaluation of current conditions, we took a look at all of these things that were in there. We looked at the community, the demographics, we looked at the management components, how is the organizational structure look? Is it pretty acceptable to what's out there? Is the reporting methodology that they have good? Current staffing analysis, what is the staff? Do you have enough people? Do you have too many people? Are they stationed in the right spot? Do they staff the right apparatus? That's in the staffing analysis. Capital assets and improvement programs, how well is the department funded, at least on the major expense level for that? How does that work? Is there good planning options? Is there good planning strategies for how to fund at least the major capital expenses for the department? A financial review of how the actual operations portion of the organization is funded. And then lastly, service delivery and performance is where you'll actually see all those benchmarking and times of how does the department actually perform against national standards. The current conditions, we came up with four critical issues. A lot of this is based on input from the chief. First one is the fact that the current fire station location and that facility for current needs and future growth. So are the fire stations where they are right now, as the communities continue to grow, especially Grimes, are they in the right spot? It's an issue to be looked at and evaluated. Enhance strategic engagement and collaboration with the fire board. The fire board has been in an advisory position since the inception of the 2080 agreement. Is it really functioning as well as it should? Or are there better things that the fire board could be doing that actually enhance the performance of the fire department? Creating a joint community fleet replacement plan that includes long-range planning. One of the issues that we're going to identify is the fact is that because the fire department is basically submitting to two separate organizations, long-range planning becomes a challenge for them. We'll talk about that in a little bit some more. And then creating a wages and benefits package that promotes a single identity amongst the fire department. What's unique about the arrangement that Johnston and Grimes has is the fact that sharing resources within the fire service is not unusual. It happens across the country. There's all sorts of different ways to do it. But typically, when people talk about sharing resources, they maintain their own identity for about 95% of the organization, and they share one resource. So they may share a training officer, or they may share one fire engine, or they may train, they may share a training site or instructors or something like that. You guys are unique in the sense that you are actually sharing an entire division of your community in one. And that creates some challenges with that. It's a unique concept, but it's one that from a sense of efficiency and effectiveness, and certainly from cost, works out very well. But it has its own set of hurdles that we'll talk about here. Future challenges that were identified for the current conditions are population growth. We mentioned that. The 2080 agreement with dual government oversight structure and its operational impact on organizational efficiencies, that's probably the main purpose of what the whole report was about, is whether or not the 2080 agreement in its current form is working well, and if not, what could be done better. Capital purchases in the current organizational structure with dual government oversight. Station 37's future location, possibility of a future fire station in North Johnston, and are the staffing levels that are in place right now adequate for the growth? So those were identified as the main critical issues that the fire department either is or will be experiencing in the next couple of years. From an infrastructure assessment, we took a look at all three fire stations. And we looked at everything from the physical portion of the building, how is it laid out? How are the apparatus in there? What's the safety margin for the firefighters that are in there? Can it be used for other things like training and workout equipment? And what we concluded was basically is that the condition of Grimes Station 37 is marginal. It was not built for its career fire department that it has right now. It was built for a fire department and using a different model, obviously volunteers at that point. And it has been adapted to a career, to a career service, but it has found wanting and being able to do that effectively. Station 38 is in good condition. It's in a good location where it's at. It functions well where it's at, under the current response model that they have right now. But the chief has suggested that there are some things that could be done differently to enhance the response to the community, and Station 38 comes into play with that because of the fact that that's right in the center. And then Station 39 is actually in very good condition. Very little, if any, was actually discovered regarding Station 39 at all. And there's a lot more detail in the report regarding all three stations there. As far as your apparatus is concerned, I would say overall, all of them, the top portion of them there are your engines and pumper, aerials and ladders, and then medic units and specialty units and command staff. Overall, I would say that the quality of your fire apparatus is probably between, right around good. Nothing that's in excellent condition. You've got one vehicle that's in a reserve and the engine is in poor condition, and then your two aerials are in poor condition as well. At least one of them needs to be replaced. And we'll talk about later about whether or not you need to replace both of them or only replace one of them. But overall, your apparatus is, like I said, is in good condition. Some of them are, your command staff fleet's in very good condition. Basically, your frontline apparatus is really where the investment needs to be made for your responders there. Service demand by incident type, there's a couple of things to really just note about this, is that your call volume is predominantly 67% EMS. Repportioning this over there, that's pretty in line with nationally where fire departments are providing. And the other third of them are going to what we call just non-EMS calls. It could be a fire, could be a fire alarm going off, could be any type of a service call, but anything that's non-EMS. And so the ratio and the proportion that you have there are pretty consistent with what national standards are and what fire departments experience across the country. And the chart on the right is really your escalation level. It's basically an extended pattern of where we saw over the last five years of incidents and how we project that to go up over the next 20 or 30 years. And certainly by 2050, you're sitting around 3,500 calls right now, and in probably 30 years, you're going to be at about 10,000 calls. So you're roughly going to triple your call volume over the next 30 years. And obviously, if you want to be proactive, you know, and not wait till something, it's obviously good to be on top of that because you're working right now. When we look at where your calls are right now and where they happen within the community, your fire stations are decently located. Most of the calls that you have right now are right out where they're at. Certainly from what we understand, the northwest of area of Grimes, farther northwest of Station 37, anticipating most of the growth, all the, most of the growth will be happening up here. And so the question becomes whether or not you need another fire station, or whether or not Station 37 just needs to be moved. And I would say at this point, that's our recommendation that until the call volume really increases, Station 37 could be moved farther northwest if you wanted to build in some planning, and especially if you thought that it was really going to take off in the next five to 10 years. But otherwise, your stations are fairly well located related to where your current call volume is right now. Comparable departments in the report on the right side over there, we do a bunch of different analyses that talk about different ways to compare Johnston to other fire departments that are in the area. You're in a pretty unique situation because of the fact that you border an urban area pretty much to the south, and you border pretty much a rural area to the north. And so when you look at the comparable towns that are on the left there, not all of them are going to be a match for match because some of those communities are more urban in nature, some are more rural, some of them have a higher density than you have. But as you look at the comparisons on there, just be careful about not trying to apply Johnston and Grimes to every single one of them. Look at the characteristics of the department that you want to compare yourself to and find one that you've got something in common with them, and then do that comparison, you know, for you right now. Overall, when you look at all of those, there are some that Johnston and Grimes is probably a little bit higher than the average and others, and there are some that are Johnston and Grimes is a little bit lower than. But it depends on what it is, but there's nothing that's out of the ordinary as far as a fire department comparing them to the communities around you. So what's going well with the fire department, some of our findings here? One, both communities are unique in the fact that you're willing to pursue a relationship that surprisingly is not very common in Iowa. Lot of departments around the country, there's a lot of areas, more so on the coast than necessarily in the Midwest, where regionalization of fire departments is very common, almost to a county-wide level on some of them. So you guys are pretty unique on the fact that you are stepping forward and saying regionalization of the fire department really is a good thing for a number of different reasons, which we'll get to here. So as I mentioned earlier, from the perspective of intentionality, your 2080 agreement is working. It is working well, but there are some rooms for improvement. What works well is the fact that operationally, the fire department sees itself as a single organization, and that's really where, which we'll talk about in a minute, where the challenges come to play. But where the fire department can function as a single organization and not have to worry about what does Johnston think, what does Grimes think, and somehow trying to reconcile those two together, the fire department works well. They operate under same protocols, they operate under the same policies, they operate in such a way that municipal boundaries are not part of the equation, and they respond into both communities. That works very well. And then there's a risk assessment of both communities, but it needs to be updated more frequently. One of the things that communities are slowly getting into, it's not a very popular thing right now, but they need to be doing it, and you are doing it, and that is dividing a risk assessment. What is it in our community that needs the fire department? Why do we have a fire department? Why do we have an ambulance? Why do we have to have a ladder truck? All of those things. You guys have that as a part of your risk assessment, and as your community demographics change, you're going to want to do that regularly. Usually everywhere, three to five years is an adequate period of time to do a risk assessment. So kudos for you for being able to have that. So where are the areas for improvement come along? The main area of improvement that we recognize comes in the area for the fire chiefs on up. Everything that we looked at for down here, while there are some operational things that can happen to improve the fire department. The big challenge is that the fire department has to do, has to do with the fact that they answer to two separate supervisors. They have two separate organizations that they go to. And if any of you have worked for a boss before where you've had, or worked for an organization where you've had two bosses, you know that's a problem. And that's what the fire department deals with here. And so everything that we're going to go through, or most of what we're going to go through, has to do with the fact that the fire chief has two separate organizations that he has to answer to. And there are differences in everything that you would think about in a boss, working for two bosses in an organization, he experiences here as well. Different personalities, different philosophies, different ways of doing things. And so therefore, that translates to inefficiencies that work their way down. The current form of the joint governance structure of the fire department's efficient organizational practice is a challenge. And what I mean here is by non-operational ones. When he can implement, when the chief can implement something that applies to everybody across the board, as he does with a single fire department, works well. He's no different than any other fire department that's on there. But when he starts getting into the things that hit that, this is the way Johnston wants it done, and this is where the way Grimes wants it done, then we start running into issues because it may sometimes just be a policy thing or a procedure thing, but sometimes it could be a philosophical issue as well that he feels. I just mentioned that, different priorities and philosophies of the organization. It can be challenged by the need to approach its own needed planning while working within two different governing organizations' planning perspectives. Even within a municipal organization, fire chiefs often have to compete with the police chief, or the public works, or the park visitor, or administration. And they have to figure out, how do they fit in with the priorities of that particular community? Well, in this particular case here, double that. And so now he's got, the chief and the fire department have to figure out, where do they fit in with not one community, but how do they fit in with two communities? And when one community is ready to do something, is the other community ready to support that? Because they have their different set of priorities as well. So planning can become a challenge as he tries to say, we want to do this in two years, or three years, or four years. Because now he's got to check with Johnston's planning, and got to check with Grimes, and see how any of those can be coordinated, and it actually creates a great deal of complexity. And then when it comes to the 2080 terms of the agreement, because they're renewed every three years, and there seems to be an uncertainty about whether or not we're going to continue this arrangement indefinitely, there's really not a good scope for long-range planning. What do we want to do five years from now? What do we want to do 10 years from now? Because if you think that you're going to be able to jump out of the agreement every three years, there's no incentive to invest in long-term. Everything becomes a short-term decision that is made. And then that short-term decision is obviously fits in with what you guys do. So his long-term strategic planning is very limited at this point here. While the 2080 agreement spells out forms of equity, the execution of other elements of the agreement, including the definition, employment practices and resources such as staffing practices, gives the impression that the character of the fire department reflects Johnston more than it does Grimes. Now, in this particular kind of an arrangement, because the fire department really can't have its own unique identity, it has to be Johnston, it has to be Grimes, or whatever it is that's on there, there was some feedback that led us to believe that many of the people who do that's got to, because Johnston is the administrative town under the 2080 agreement, that the organization carries more of a Johnston flavor than a Grimes flavor. To some of that, to some degree, that's just the way it's going to be, just because of the fact that they can't do their own unique thing at this particular point. But there may be some things there that you can actually sit down and identify, what is it? Whether it's staffing at the city hall, whether it's who the chief meets with, where does the staffing go? Are there benefits to procedures and policies that Grimes has versus Johnston? Those kinds of things can probably sit down and say, okay, what is it that we do that's got a Johnston flavor? And what is it that we do that has a Grimes flavor? And do both communities feel like they're equally represented within the fire department? The intention to maintain financial equity between the organizations results in a significant amount of staff time in trying to make sure that the balances are there. Because of the proportion that you have and how you allocate funding and how you do your billing, a lot of the staff spends time just sitting there, going through bills and saying, is this Johnston? Is it Grimes? Is it proportioned? Should this be something that's different? And so a lot of the stuff that comes along through them, they spend time just trying to figure out, how does that work with the finances of the different community, as well as whose expense should this be? Is this a shared expense? And unfortunately, most expenses within a fire department probably can't even be defined just by that nature itself. It's not that simple. There are sometimes expenses aren't always Johnston, they're not always Grimes, and they're not evenly split down the middle. There may be something that's in the community that, you know, we need to do this because Johnston is part of the community, and so there's going to be a slight benefit to them. But you know what? If we do that, Grimes is going to benefit from it as well. So it makes sense to do it as a fire department. Figuring that stuff, having to figure that out and balance that all the time takes time and takes a lot of mental and emotional energy as well. The elected officials and community staff of both organizations don't understand the justifications of career fire departments. You are not alone on this. There are many elected officials across the country who say, why do we do 24, why do we have to do 24/7 shifts? Why do we do 24/48? What, 24 hours on, seven days a week, 365? Can we do 40 hours a week? Do they have to be on 24/48s or 48/96s? Why do we, if we're going to create a new position on an engine or an ambulance, why do we have to hire three people or four people? Those are good questions that elected officials ask all the time, as well as many of the community staff. And so what's one of the things that we did learn was that you all, and some of the staff that are not present here, still don't understand everything about how a fire department operates and why they do what they need to do there. And there's good reasons behind it, so some areas for improvement there. Well, advisory in nature, the fire board is perceived as providing limited joint strategic direction. The fire board appears to be a board that really is more of a formality that's in play because of the agreement and doesn't necessarily provide the strategic and advisory level stuff or information or input the way that it's adjusted. Under the agreement, the way that I understand it, is the agreement was supposed to be that the fire board kind of provides the first round of approvals or input to the fire department on what it is they need to do, and then they get all that stuff done. And once the fire board comes to an agreement on what is the fire department's doing, and that information is basically passed on to you at the city council for doing that. The fire board doesn't seem to be doing that right now. They're spending more time on administrative stuff. So the ability for them to provide strategic direction, encouragement, in lieu of all of you being present, some more time can be spent on moving them to more of strategic nature and guidance for the fire department. And the integration between the two communities as a single fire department, and that's a big deal there, because effectively what you do is you own half of the fire department. Really want to look at it that way. Your HR characteristics are different between the two. If somebody's going to be, if somebody's going to have a personnel manual, there's one over here for Johnston, there's one over here for Grimes. If you're going to have wages and benefits, there's one for, there's one set of wages and benefits for Grimes, there's another set for Johnston. And many, many fire department unions, when they do negotiations, and it doesn't have to be a union, it can be any fire department organization, typically when they're talking about whether or not their employment conditions are good, they're comparing themselves. They talk to their neighbor next door and say, hey, what do you do? How much time off do you get? What kind of medical plan do you have? What's your policies for promotion? And all that comparison, that's just part of the process that they have. You have that within your organization. You have a fire department, two guys riding in the front seat of a fire truck, and one is Grimes and one is Johnston. Operationally, it makes sense. That's the best way to use the people. But then they talk about what are their benefits with each other? So the expectation is the same across the board for all your firefighters and for all your paramedics, but the way we treat them, and I treat them by talking about the employment side of it there, is different. And so that creates tension between them when one of you has something that the other one doesn't provide, or vice versa, and then they start that comparison within the organization itself. Data integrity of department's internal reporting system is questionable. As I mentioned, this shows up in the Times that we did, but effectively, to just give you a little bit more detail, it's not as easy as going back in there and just saying, well, let's just fix time, let's fix time, we need to fix this. A lot of what they do and a lot of the data that they get is automated, and it's automated from other agencies, specifically the 911 Center. And so when data is coming through and it's not coming through correctly, and it's creating some wrong information, then you need to go back, they need to go back and figure out, what do we do internally to make the changes that need to be done? But also, what do we need to do externally? And if it's an external problem, that may be a lot more difficult to solve because you've got to get other people involved and figure out what's going on. But there are some indications, as I said, from your reporting system, that some of the data that's coming out there is questionable. So what are our recommendations? Under governance, we really, really, really recommend that you work towards some type of a single organizational structure, from governance all the way down to the operational level. You've got that at the operations level, somehow you need to figure out how to have governance so that the chief is not responding to or reporting to two separate bodies. Number two, we review the role of the fire board in a collaborative environment that includes elected officials from both communities. To me, this seems like this is almost the natural place for that to happen, and that is the fire board becomes the governing board for the fire department. It's made up of elected officials. It looks out for both communities. It's probably the area where you can work towards that provides the least amount of change to the organization, because you've already got one of those in place. So that would actually make the fire board much more strategic, because they're actually looking out for not just Johnston or Grimes, but the fire board has a dual responsibility for looking out for both communities. So Johnston officials are also looking out for the city of Grimes, and Grimes officials are also looking out for the city of Johnston. The fire board and the city council should adopt the department's strategic plan. They have not done that yet. The strategic plan, as you know, is something that over anywhere from two to five years provides specific targets and objectives of what do we want to accomplish, which is a lot of organizations do. The difference is that when you don't have approval, it's hard to tell at the chief's level whether or not he has buy-in and support for whatever it is that he has planned to do. Or for that matter, whether or not he's heard you all correctly. But by giving formal approval of those, it's actually a way of getting validation for actually the fire department. Then increase the prioritization level of replacement of the location of Station 37. It's been talked about for a while. I know that Grimes has had some priorities that they've been working through and they've been balancing through with that. It would make sense to actually begin having a stronger discussion over when and where that's actually going to take. From an administration perspective, our recommendations include adding mission value and values to the strategic plan document. It's always good to set that as the foundation for the direction that we're going to be going on that. Establish management processes to track the goals. This is a way to basically, not only do you have a direction that you want to go, but you are affirming and informing everybody of what you're going to be doing and how you're going to be doing it. At the same time, it also lets buy-in come into the organization. They can see what's important, they can see where the time is being spent, they can say, I have opportunities to help out here, and they can jump in and participate. So having some ways to publicly, or at least internally, show the direction of the fire department would be very helpful. Fill remaining three non-career positions with career staff. Right now, each of the shifts has one position that is filled by part-timers. It's from a cost perspective, and that's understandable. Filling part-timers or filling positions that can be filled with full-timers usually creates other issues though, because you usually have a different set of standards that part-timers have to meet than other than full-timers do. And when in the context of efficiency and effectiveness, if you can have the same people there every single day doing the same job, and the relationships are being built with all the people, that's all the more reason just to have the same, have those positions filled and get that efficiency there. Promote singularity of staff employment by creating a joint labor agreement between the two communities, or have both communities adopt the two communities or have both communities adopt the same labor agreement. This is one of those that absolutely would make a difference in the relationships between the firefighters and get rid of that comparing that goes back and forth. If you have people here who are all doing the same job and the expectations are the same, there shouldn't be any differences in how they're employed between them. But work on a joint labor agreement. And that may mean that Johnston and Grimes actually has to sit down separately before they sit down with the firefighters and say, alright, what do we want to do here? It would certainly create tension if you aim for a joint labor agreement and Grimes says, well, we want to go this way and Johnston says, we want to go this way. And now you've just put that division down there and you're making it wider. So it makes sense for the elected officials or the city staff to actually work together first before they go to the negotiations with the union. Consider the administration of an administrative officer position in charge of training in EMS. One of the things that fire departments do when they are not staffed administratively is they begin putting all those administrative responsibilities on shift people. And to some degree, for expenses and costs, it makes sense to do that. But there becomes a point when an organization becomes big enough where the administrative demand on them needs to be done in place of operations. And as long as a firefighter is sitting in a station, he may be training, he may be exercising, but sometimes a phone call has to be made or a policy has to be written or something like that that has to be done. It's not too difficult for all of a sudden operational types of events get pushed off to the side and the administrative stuff becomes more priority. When you start putting operational stuff aside, training goes out the window, relationship building needs to get compromised. And then you actually start getting a point where you get inefficiencies in effectiveness because companies don't work well together. And so therefore, having some administrative people that do that stuff and let the shift be shift stuff with operations actually becomes very beneficial. Continue implementing department-wide health and safety programs. The chief is already doing this. I just want to reiterate to you that firefighter health has changed as far as how employers keep track of that and what they're doing for it. Up until five or 10 years ago, PTSD was one of those things that was just under the table. We talked about it after critical incidents if it came out, but it was not a big deal. It was just part of the job and you had to learn to live with it. Mental health is huge right now. Physical fitness, cancer, all of those things are now being recognized within the fire service as something that are extraordinarily detrimental to firefighters, EMTs and paramedics. And I can't emphasize enough how important it is to continue to make that a priority in your organization. Take care of the physical and the mental health of all of your firefighter. Establish a common IT network for all staff at all stations. This was a part of our analysis, my understanding that there's a bridge that's now between the two. But I still want to recommend that if you're going to keep both organizations separately and you're going to have a Grimes fire station have one network or one piece of software and Johnston has the same thing, that just creates opportunities for miscommunication of what's going on. You really want your firefighters, especially because Grimes firefighters sometimes work in Johnston stations and Johnston firefighters sometimes work in Grimes station. You want them to see the same thing no matter where they go. It'd be like you going into an office or going into several offices and you've got to come up with your own computer system or your own network every time you ever come in. So work towards continuing to standardize across both communities there. And then pursue a single capital improvement plan with negotiations over ownership and maintenance. This one was recognized as a challenge in the sense that you've got apparatus that need to replace, specifically your ladder truck. You also have maintenance issues where fire departments or fire vehicles are maintained by one town and the other town can't touch them. So sometimes you get vehicles that have to cross jurisdictions to get to their maintenance site. Ownership, who owns it? If you're going to jointly pay for a ladder truck or an engine, who owns that? Who insures that? What's the responsibility for that particular community? Work towards a different plan. And one of our options after example of how do you do something without having to say joint ownership, but you still do something where you can share the responsibility? So, the example that we use, which I'll show you in a minute here, is really just alternating purchases back and forth so you don't have to necessarily worry about that. Operations, enhance effective response forces by conducting task analysis on the hazards. This is used when you want to understand exactly what is it that a firefighter does and why do we need more of them or why do we need less of them for that matter. When we do task analysis, how long does it take to throw a ladder? How many people does it take to carry an ambulance? How many people does it take to carry a patient on an ambulance? One of the questions that we frequently get is, why do five guys go to an ambulance call? Why isn't engine and ambulance going on all these ambulance calls? Task analyses show you those things, why they do that. So continue to conduct them and for the fire department, educate your officials on what those are as it comes, because it really comes into play when it's time to support more staff, more stations or more equipment. Consider the operational impact when the fleet can't be maintained or fueled by the other city because each of you maintain your own ways of doing things. It's our understanding that you really can't interact fleets across municipal boundaries. So, if the maintenance department on Grimes wants it done one way, they won't have a Johnston vehicle come over to Grimes and vice versa, they can't have a Johnston maintenance department maintaining Grimes fleet. So figure out how to coordinate that, whether it's buying the same brand, whether it's coming up with the same standards, but figure out a way to have those two communities have their fleet maintenance more coordinated. Consider eye apparatus placed throughout the department and where training needs take to place. Right now, Station 38, which is the center of the district, really does not have good training facilities for the fire departments to train. So many times, they will come all the way over to Station 39, they'll train at Station 39, and then if a call happens in Grimes while they're training here, they have to race all the way across Johnston into Grimes. So they're moving all the people over to one area and at the expense of something in another area. And that's not necessarily unusual because most fire departments don't have training meeting facilities in the center of the district. You have an opportunity to do that. You have an opportunity to expand Station 38 in such a way that you really can make that a training site so that fire department apparatus and people don't have to go racing across the district with training if a call comes in. We do think that you can do with one less engine. You have five of them in your fleet right now for three stations to have an engine. Typically, only one reserve engine is needed. So when you look at the apparatus list that's on there and you're thinking about the future, we think that Johnston and Grimes really could get away with four engines. And then, you don't have it in there, but when it comes to ladder trucks, which I know you have two of right now and you're kind of in a discussion over how to do that or how to replace them, for a community your size that you have right now, you really only need one ladder truck. But, if it's at all possible, you would like it to have in the center of your district, not on an outlying station. When it comes to deciding whether or not you need to have a reserve ladder truck, most fire departments look in the areas around them and they see who else has ladder trucks and how fast can they get here and how often do we use our ladder truck? And if it's one of those where it doesn't happen very often and your risk, your target categories are not that difficult or that much of a challenge or you don't see them that frequently, sometimes a reserve is not needed. It may do with another town's ladder truck and having them come as a reserve for them. If you can afford it, it certainly makes sense. That's for every vehicle, you have a reserve type so you can bring it in and play. But, we don't recognize having two ladder trucks as a top priority for you guys right now. And close to look at how times are captured. That has to do with the fact that the times that we've mentioned, every question, our department needs to take a real specific look at how is that actually taking place, whether it's automated or whether or not it's manual and why is our data not as accurate as it could be? So how do we go forward from here? Well, there's basically four options. These are the first three. One is, you don't do anything. You just keep it the way it is and maybe we can do some small changes to our protocols and our policies, but otherwise things are going to stay the same and we're going to continue to just go with the same practice. And then your improvements are going to be very limited in that option. Number two, you dissolve the agreement completely and you allow each community to establish its own fire department. We don't recommend that. It's going to cost you more money to do that than it would if you keep the fire department the way it is primarily through all the extra people that you're going to need in order to make it happen. But you also lose some effectiveness to service to the community that you would have by dissolving. If you did that, one town, Grimes, is going to have one fire station, Johnston's going to have two, and you now have to work out separate agreements on how you're going to cover each other. Right now, the chief has the ability to look at both communities and he can treat everybody together and he says, whatever I'm giving to Johnston, I'm going to give to Grimes. Now that becomes a matter of negotiation. And Grimes at any particular point can say, nah, we're not going to help Johnston. Or Johnston can turn around and say, nah, we're going to not help Grimes. So that risk will always be out there. So we don't recommend that, but we kind of show you how that would play out. Number three, and this is a short-term solution to what we think is the long-term solution. And that is, I mentioned before, develop some practices that you can do to enhance planning between the two organizations. Financial planning, human resources planning. Find stuff, find things that Johnston and Grimes can sit down and say, can we do this the same way together? Can we buy things the same way? Are there places that we can go? Are there procedures that we can do that somehow work things together? But find out ways that you can actually coordinate your spending or coordinate your activities more to try to move towards a single organizational way of doing things. Even if it's not overall as an organization, at least procedurally, it looks that way. Then option four, at a broad level, is allow the fire department to function completely as a single organization. That's the ultimate goal. Try to get them top to bottom, governance all the way down to the firefighter, one organization just like any other other organization that's out there. We want them to operate as one. And we've come up with at least three ways that that can be done. One, one city contracts with the other one. Whether it's Johnston or Grimes, however you decide to do it, one of them turns around and says, we're going to host the fire department, and the other one says, okay, we're going to pay you for whatever that service is, and that's the only obligation that other community has, and that is to pay the providing agency for coverage for their community. Everything is handled by the providing agency, staffing, maintenance, all of that. And so, one agency basically just absolves himself of having a fire department in contracts with the one next to them. Obviously, you would have to figure out which one would be picked. Number two, convert the fire department to a single independent organization. We think that this can be done under the 28E rules. There are some variations to that that would actually allow the fire department to function as a single organization and including at a governance level and begin to have that single chain of command, line of authority that we need. Westcom, which is the dispatch center for West Des Moines, practices it. The Water District, is that what it is? The Des Moines Water District is another one, the Waste Authority, they do it as well. Those are all 28E agreements that operate as one organization. Now, it changes a little bit because of how the governance and the funding works, but it does make sure that the entire organization is one and one organization all the way down. And then lastly, consider the creation of a response district pending the approval of Iowa state legislation which came through about two weeks ago. And so therefore, we don't have a lot of information on that, but we'll talk about that very briefly here. So what are the pros and cons of each one? Option one, maintaining the status quo. Pro of it is very little changes, nothing. And, a lot of people like things the way they are. No matter how inefficient they are or ineffective they are, they like things the way they are and we keep it. That's the pro. The con is that nothing is going to change. The efficiencies and the challenges that they have may actually get worse as the organization grows just by the number of people that are going to come in, the amount of funding that's going to come in, the types of expenses that are going to come in. If you don't do anything from what you're doing right now, the challenges that they're dealing with are not going to go away. May be able to improve some things, but overall, you're only going to be able to improve so much. This is what we're basically talking about, the command that you have right now. And then over here is a combined expenditure report there, where we've really got, for fiscal year 23, we've got a combined budget of about $6.5 million with option one, which is where you're at right now. And I'll show you a comparison in a minute here of how that plays out. Option two, dissolve the existing agreement and allow the community to establish its own fire department. It solves a lot of the problems because any of the problems that are related to a single organization go away. You have one governance board, you have one identity that the fire department begins to operate under. It creates organizational efficiency up and down by only having one administrative staff to fill with it. No issues about future expenses and who's going to pay for them, it's all within one organization. The cons are, as we mentioned, the fact that you lose efficiency, that you stand gain by putting things together. It is going to be more expensive to do that. There could even be some revenue loss too, depending on how the call gets restricted on that. And then any of the volume purchasing and the finance savings that you've got, that would cost. This is an example of what those organizations might look like. We basically just took the model that you're using right now and saying, that's the model for Johnston and Grimes. And we're saying that that model needs to apply to both Johnston and Grimes. And by separating them, really where the big costs are increased costs are going to come from the assets to accommodate both departments there. That's the individual budgets that we've come up with. Again, there's a comparison on that. There's about, Johnston was showing about a $5.4 million budget and Grimes was showing about a $4.1 million budget, which is above what you're currently paying. Existing practices to allow the fire department more comprehensive strategic and capital planning. Again, this is all about trying to get the departments to plan together and to work together, communities, as you say, to plan together and work together more strategically. Don't be thinking about, we've got to have it out and only do this two years at a time in small steps. Figure out some way that you can on a short-term basis improve what you are doing collaboratively between the organizations so the fire department doesn't have to sit there and sit there and run this weight and this balance all the time, every time a decision has to be made or an expense has to be incurred. And then this is the emphasis that we're talking about a lot in the fire organization, is one board of directors that he answers to. Pros and cons of city contracting with one for the other. The pro is you basically, one fire department has all the control, they decide what's going to happen. The pro is one town that maybe doesn't want their fire department can say, good riddance, I'm done with it, I don't want to deal with this anymore. But they still have the ability to grab fire protection. The con is, one of the communities may have to give up having a fire department. Some towns are okay with doing it, most towns are not. They like having their own fire department and they like having the direct say in how that goes. Converting the fire department to a single independent organization, for the most part, this resolves most of the issues. This allows a single fire department, a single organizational structure all the way up and down. It cleans up the chain of command. It still allows the volume purchasing, that is, the benefits that you gain off of that. The balancing that goes between them disappears. The con is that you may have to, as elected officials, you might have to release a little bit of direct control and have a little bit more of indirect control and staying with guidance on that. So, be aware of it. And then lastly was the state legislature. Two weeks ago, when we did the report, it was a, there was draft legislation that was done about allowing fire districts to create, I'm sorry, allowing communities to create their own fire districts, which are basically going to be taxing bodies themselves. And up until, actually, I don't know, sometime in the past, fire districts were taken out of it and their taxing districts were allowed to exist, whether it was a park district or a water district. Fire departments weren't allowed to do that anymore. And then two weeks ago, that was. We didn't do a whole lot of analysis on that because at the time we did the report, it had been sitting out there in the legislature for about a year and we had no idea that any activity was being taken place on that. But in a nutshell, what the state legislature allows communities to do, to create a separate taxing body that solely provides one function and one function only, and this would be fire and EMS service. There's some nuances to how it gets done, but effectively, it would take the fire department out of both of your communities and allow a separate organization with community approval to take place. And then that also solves a lot of the issues that we have. As it comes down to cost on here, this option one, no change. We're expecting the budget for 23 to be $6.5 million combined between the two communities. And the center option two is if you were to take the two budgets from, if you were to break apart and separate the two towns, the two towns combined would have a total expense of $8.3 million. and separate the two towns, the two towns combined would have a total expense of $8.3 million on the bottom. And then four is if you go toward a single organization, there's a little bit of an increase there because we add one staff person and the, the differences between the two organizations get balanced into one. So some areas that are high get brought lower and some that are lower get high. But there's a little bit of an increase. All of those details, I know this was quick. Again, the details supporting all of this are in the report itself. But that's, that's our conclusions about your fire department. Doing good the way that they are right now, as far as the 28E is concerned. Certainly some room for, quite a bit of room for improvement at the governance problem. Any questions? Sure, there are.
Anybody have any questions?
In one of these recommendations, I talked about the. I'm looking at slide 24. I think it's option two. One of the cons of this system is possible increase in ISO rating. In the report, you talk about our current ISO rating is like three.
Correct.
How? Is the current administrative model, or the current way it's done, does that raise our rating? Or what are the various factors that affect it? The way we're doing it now, help the rating or hurts the rating?
So generally, right now, the, the way you're doing it right now helps the rating because Johnston, Grimes is reviewed as one fire department. If you separate them, they are now being reviewed individually. And the benefits that one town offers, you know, like a ladder truck. If, let's say, Grimes didn't want a ladder truck anymore, that would go away. Training, the number of people, your responses that come into play, those would, those would potentially be evaluated differently. Water supply, it may, it may not be, it may not be changed, but depending on how, how the water supply is used and how ISO evaluates that, that could come into play too. You're running, you run the risk with ISO, that by separating the organizations, you have fewer resources now to do the job. And so depending on how ISO sees that, they could change the rating. I doubt it would go significantly higher, but it could go higher.
I guess, one of the other related question, but one of the concerns that I have, but I think one of the benefits of the current system is you would have sort of elected official to help them oversee. Have that role of fire. And so you have a, especially the management cost. Some of the concerns I've got about some sort of limitation. So I have those concerns.
Can I ask, can I ask where you see that would be lost?
Well, when you have a board, I, I think that you, if you have a board of directors, around eight. And I, that's, I have this, are to, to drive them. They're, they're setting taxing rates in the city, but they're not elected.
Yes, I agree with you, and that's not what we're advocating. I mean, even when we talk about the fire board, the fire board is largely made up of elected officials.
Right.
So that's what, all of those models assume that that board of directors of some type would be elected officials, not staff. So you're, you're right in the sense that, that staff would not, there's a different accountability level and you wouldn't want staff doing it. But whether it's, even if, whether it's the, whether it's the state, the fire district, if you create, choose to create a new fire district, that's still elected officials that oversee that. If it's the contracting with another, you know, department, and you have, or one of you contracts with the other, you've got the other town with the city council, you know, having that. And then the city council to negotiate the services. So yes, I would agree with you. But none of those suggest that staff is the board of directors, they're all elected officials.
Or public members.
Correct.
I had some questions around your, and they're similar to questions that Congressman Pope raised around the option B, the one that you're recommending. And the first one was, you know, who would make up this board? And it sounds like you're, you're suggesting that it be elected official. You probably haven't thought about the process for selecting them, and that's.
That's actually, that's actually up to the elected officials to decide how they want to do that.
And that, that would be something that would have to wrestle with, just, you know, how, how are the individuals like that? Would, would they have taxing, separate taxing authority?
So it depends on, it depends on which organizational model you go with.
Well, the one that you're recommending.
So the one that we're recommending, which would be, probably be something like a 28E agency, would not have taxing authority.
So they would establish a budget?
They would establish a budget.
And then there would be some expectation that they just turn it over to the city councils and then?
No, no.
I'm trying to understand this.
Okay, so let's say, let's say we have, let's just use the fire board as an example. Three elected officials from the fire board, three elected officials from Johnston, three from Grimes that are on there. They approve the budget. So he has a single budget, he makes a recommendation to, to the fire board. The fire board says, you're good to go.
Okay.
The city councils then say, okay, three of you are already on the board, you've approved it. So that's just an expense that is brought into each city's budget.
But there would be an expectation that that would not change?
Correct. Once the fire board approves it, that's the number that's passed on to, that's on to the city council. And even if you were to do a model, a 28E agency, that's typically the way that it, that it functions. And that is, the oversight, the board of directors approves the budget based upon what they know, their, their governing agencies are telling them to do and not to do, or whatever it is.
And I think it's that notion that makes us a little bit nervous because we have to take into consideration the entire budget and how that, you know, how the fire, you know, fire department's budget fits into the entire budget.
Yeah, just, they would basically just act to factor, strike, the back to budget. If every budget they submitted, council would have to.
But the expectation would be that the three people that are on the fire board know what the city is already dealing with and knows where the priorities are and hopefully would run interference. I would agree with you that if the three people are completely distant from the council, then, then there's no accountability that goes.
I think it's just a challenge, it's a concept that, that we would be a little bit challenged by. The other, the other question I have around the model that you're recommending is the, the assets that are currently owned by the communities. Is the suggestion then that each of the communities just cede those assets to this group?
So if you were to create it as a, if you were to create it as a 28E agency, then the assets would go towards whatever the agency is that's hosting the 28E agency. And then the asset, and then, so let's, let's say, let's say it's Grimes that chooses to host it and Johnston gives the asset.
But under the independent one that you're recommending?
Right.
There isn't a host community.
Yeah, so if I could jump in for one second. Can we all just agree, four A's? None of us are going to sign on beforehand? Or am I mistaken?
I, I don't know that we need, I, I don't know that we want to put anybody on the spot tonight. Saying that one thing is in, oh, we're just considering the options and asking.
Because I don't want to keep mingling that term, maybe we just don't need.
No, and, and that's why I keep trying to focus on the ones that they're recommending. So I understand more clearly what it is that they're recommending.
And, and I guess I'm, there's, there's a number of different ways that it can go. You could, you could turn all the assets over to somebody like West Des Moines. All the assets are actually owned by West Des Moines. And then the towns participating in them pay something to them for that. So you could do the same thing. Another way you could do it.
Of course, that's a bigger, that's a bigger organization where other communities.
No doubt you're doing it at a much smaller scale, no doubt about it. The other way would, would be to create them as a separate agency itself. Give them authority, non-taxing, but actually make them a separate corporation or a subcorporation or something like that. And then they own, then they own all of that.
And they're essentially being what the legislature is now saying.
But they're not taxing.
So we're taxing. That's the one difference between right there and the goals of future.
Correct. The, the state legislature allows the community to decide that they want a completely separate taxing body to provide fire protection. And, and that oversight board will be the elected officials, if I remember the legislation correctly, will be the elected officials of the jurisdictions that it's going to cover.
Do you see that successfully happening in other states?
Fire districts, absolutely, fire districts, which is really what this is, are used across the country.
Do you like the model?
I just came from, I retired from one after I graduated here, so yes. There are, there are, there are pros and cons, but there are pros and cons to it.
But it's, it's not here yet, it's.
Um, it's probably coming in this direction, yeah.
Chris, I have a question, and it goes back a little bit backwards. I was, I'm on the fire board, so I was kind of concerned about the idea that the fire board is not fully involved in the decision-making and the planning and the future of the, of the fire department going forward. And I would have to admit that that is kind of true, I mean, four times a year. And I don't, I've not stepped into the station. I haven't personally met the employees. So we have this one, you know, four times a year, we have this meeting. And it went, uh, things about wages and everything, the other duty. So why would be the recommendation to get the fire board more, become that guiding, that guiding source for the, for the fire department than it isn't right now? I mean, you have elected officials, we overturn every once in a while. So you're always training and getting new people on board that aren't familiar with the challenges. I mean, I totally am not familiar with the challenges that our fire department has, except for what I get from the fire board. But where are we coming up short? How, how would we improve that?
Sure, so the, the fire board, if you were to, if you were to improve that, let's say, as a board of directors, wouldn't be any different than the way you're doing this right now with city councils meeting. Meaning with your, maybe once a month, meet with the chief, talk about, okay, what have you done?
So more often?
Oh yeah, I would, I would say, at a minimum, I would say, my recommendation would be that you meet at least monthly.
You need to help the safety board that we have right now.
You need to be involved, you need to be involved every month in knowing the issues that they're dealing with, both strategically and maybe operationally, if they're going to, if they need to have input and direction. But they need to do that, you need to be, you need to be aware of what's the, what's the big plan? Are we? Strategic plan, do we need a strategic?
So a strategic plan meeting at least once a year, not twice, you know, sort of a visioning meeting. A longer meeting than that once a month meeting that's an hour.
Or it could, or, you know, and, and the communities do it differently. You could make one of your monthly meetings, sometimes the November meeting for the following year. You just, you just vote the kind set, that aside.
The other thing that, that you kept talking about is how there's three from Grimes and three from Johnston on the fire board. But there's only two votes. Mayor doesn't have a vote, he's part of the board. So, so when you go back, it's still, it's not like there's an overwhelming majority that says, well, we're going to do this.
Are we saying, how many council overs do we have?
We only have two.
On the fire board?
We have five.
Two to five.
And as one of the representatives on, on the fire board, I do have a vote at the fire board, but I think that.
Yeah, I mean, on the budget, on the city bond, council budget. So, you know, it's not a done deal what the fire board were to come to the full council and say, we're going to do this.
I think that, that's the dynamic that I think you would have to work out under the model if you're going to keep that. I'm saying the fire board is a natural, simplest evolution right now because you've already got it in place. Versus having to come up with a whole nother structure that may take a couple of years to develop. And, and assuming that, that everybody agrees that that's the way to go on that. But it's, it's the one that would have, it was the one that had the least amount of change.
Chris, I, I mean, if I could, I mean, I'm going to try to go back and ask you to go into some of the information any, split in the fire department. When I had advocated to this study, essentially, the question that I wanted to answer was whether or not the juice was for the. You know, and I think, I think you get to that. And I think in order to understand the value of the partnership, you got to spend time contemplating doing it on your own. What do we save by partnering? Your analysis suggests that it's just north of $900,000.
Financially.
Financially, yeah. If you could though, I mean, I, I think on slide 25 and 26, you really sort of start to drill into that. And I think it would just be helpful to underscore that information for everybody. Because then, then we sort of know what it is that we're motivated by as we go forward and try to problem solve for government. We're, we're motivated by different things, I think, what makes us open. That we have found in efficiency, that $1,000 plus annual efficiency. And that's why we would put up that compromise additional administrative work. And I just want to kind of understand a little bit better the work charts that you, that you suggest and some of the staffing levels that you does, as it, as it pertains to what it might look like.
So. So what we did was, when we split the organizations, we basically just took the existing model that exists right now. Instead, we're going to duplicate that for each community. Communities come on and do the same thing. So each community is overseen by a city council, has a fire chief that answers to the city council. Each community has a deputy fire chief to basically oversee the, the operations of the organization. Actually, we basically fire chief on there. Fire marshal, this is the typical structure for what we would see with many fire departments. It's actually a smaller version because there's positions, we don't have that, some of the larger departments. Fire marshal oversees your business inspection, your community education. They oversee investigations, those types of things, so you would need one of those. Deputy fire marshal right now, because Johnston has one, we just kept him in there. Grimes might need one, we didn't put him in there, might down the load if music grows. You certainly need administrative assistance, be able to handle all of the administrative stuff that comes with the fire department. As far as the operations are concerned, we talked about the fact that creating an EMS officer, that you're, you're approaching, if you're not at the size right now where you begin to need to start work, moving some of the administrative work off to the shift people and moving into somebody who's there every day. By administrative work, I'm not talking about answering the phones or anything. I'm talking about somebody who might be responsible for equipment, somebody who might be responsible for maintenance, somebody who might be responsible for uniform, somebody who might be responsible for. Right now, all of that is handled by shift people. And if they're only there every third day, that, that particular task really only gets done every day. So actually, the progress slows down. So we're recommending that you have one of the different people training in the EMS or what it calls and focuses. I answered your question.
Well, I think, I think so. I mean, in order to understand that, and that $900,000 is correct, as I'm not. But I want to sort of just test you a little bit because I don't think, because the departments, they have, they have been assisted.
No.
And I, we have a training in the EMS officer. And I want to, so I want to ask you a little bit about that task analysis you referenced earlier. Because I think, and so far as, I just want to try to understand, this is how currently staffed or it's how you propose we would have to staff? Because, because if it's not, the savings isn't $900,000. That's, so I just want to try to understand, oh, the task analysis, is this a little bit better?
It's almost one and a half million, estimated, split, Grimes have. It's really a savings of one and a half million.
Off that chart, I'm, I'm.
Go look in the book, page 160, the very last paragraph. Page 160.
It'd be very much fair because I calculated that.
So there, so we're projecting, so what we, what we put up here is what we think that if they split, what you would need to add or what you staff your fire department.
But I think what Jake is pointing out, that what your recommendation is, if we split. But I think what Jake is pointing out, that what your recommendation is, if we split what we would need, is it not more than what we currently have to some extent?
Correct, yes.
But you wouldn't recommend that necessarily at the current time with joint, but if we split, it somehow would be more administrative staff, seemingly, than what we currently have, so why is that?
No, I'm not sure.
So, take the admin assistant, for instance, and you spoke a little bit about, you've got a shift worker who's taking on some of those responsibilities right now. Why would we split with each department that need the admin assistant for as right now they're functioning?
I think that right now, what we're suggesting is that each of them is, I see, I see your point here. Each of them is operating with city staff right now.
So wouldn't they still have city staff if they split?
They, yeah, they could.
So that may not be an actual due cost?
Well, that's essentially what I'm getting at, because then, then all of a sudden, it's not $900,000.
It would be less than.
Right, and then, I just want to understand too, like, what's the difference? I legitimately don't know, it's just a big question, what's the difference between that?
So, shift commander and lieutenant is supervisor in a fire station. You usually have, in a multi-station department, I'll give, the multi-station department, you have a shift supervisor that is usually the incident commander. He's the one that sits outside, sits outside of burning buildings or is still in there. This supervisor, he's responsible for the actual crews that are working and the actual call itself. They're gonna go on an ambulance call, they're gonna go on a car fire, they're gonna want something small. Whatever happens during the, during the day in the station is usually responsible of the shift supervisor, which is often over there. He's the supervisor in charge. When you get to a shift commander on there, and it's debatable whether or not one station department is a shift commander. The issue becomes is that when you have a, when you have a large-scale incident, you have multiple units that are coming in. Somebody needs to be outside handling it. In addition to it, shift commanders will also take care of administrative responsibility. So they're a little bit more administrative, but they also are the commanders for large-scale incidents that go on. Can it be done without shift commanders? Yes, it can. Departments that work without shift commanders often send the Deputy Chiefs on a incident. And the Deputy Chief becomes much more operational when you take him away from his degree here. So, what I'm suggesting here, including the administrative, is that, could they be done elsewhere? You, you could, you could be balancing and sending stuff back over. Most departments have at least one person that answers the phones, that does records, takes care of, you know, all the stuff that goes on, can take care of, they can take care of, maybe not billing, but we might take some... They might take care of personnel scheduling that goes on, and if that's handled by the, by the rest of the town, then that could be something that, that, we need some of that stuff on. But this is a, a recommendation to continue to try to make the Fire Department at least function within the Fire Department. Doesn't mean that they're not gonna have a charred department. That's right. But that, and this is, this is a mo, this is a recommendation model, it's not, it's not for certain. You get to get your lieutenant, you can make everybody firefighters, rotate everybody around the engines. And then you have no supervisor, you just, you just share it, you can save some costs that way too. So it depends on, it depends on, on really defining what do you want service to look like? What do you want the community to have, and how do you want the Fire Department to have?
Okay, and Grimes, currently we have Chief, Fire Marshal, Deputy Fire Marshal, joint compartment, right? But when you split, how did you bake that cake into those costs and create, like? So for example, did Johnston just get to absorb them all, and then that's all entirely a cost, right? In your calculations, or is it based on a...
According to the finance person, it's based on the difference from what you're paying, right?
Okay. I was hiring someone completely under our name, and it's a versus share, because obviously, first can't do two. It's just, it's determined right now, because obviously, someone could take out 40% of the pay, the Fire Chief. But they're all a little smaller, didn't?
That's what I'm trying to understand.
I'm not sure I'll explain.
I think yes, I think I interpreted that.
Good job, I didn't know I said that.
Comparatively to the current structure, you explained to us, because I know we've got captains, we've got lieutenants currently in the structure.
Okay, so, so right now, you are running a lieutenant, running a lieutenant, and a fire, a firefighter. You're running two paramedics at each. Got five, I'm not have a shift manager. Yes, as far as Grimes is concerned, Johnston, I should be, one Johnston, shift manager. Right now, we're short. And they're captains. Another department's their captains. Again, they're, they're the people that organize basically how the day is gonna go. Actually supervise, immediate supervisor of the firefighter. So he is, what are we gonna train, what are we gonna do today? What are we gonna take on this call? What equipment do we need, that's usually this responsibility from here. This responsibility becomes this administrative, I need to take care of my benefits, my employee well-being. I'm gonna be in charge of a massive, I said, I'm...
So we currently have that in place, understanding correctly, both committees have a captain in our terminology, a shift manager.
Well, you have one on duty at a time, so there's three of them total, just three positions. One is on duty at a time, one who is a Johnston employee, other, another person...
Mom with three stations.
Correct, he oversees all three stations.
Who's guiding to build eight, three shift. There's a super, one had above the three of them.
Well, now, Station 38 does not have a lieutenant. That's one of the things that's in the Chief's plan, is to have supervisors. Not have one, right?
Any other questions for Chris?
I don't want to be that guy, I don't want to be that guy. He or she. Yeah. There's a lot of he's thrown around, kind of bothering me. Sorry.
Well, Chris, back, go ahead.
I'm going to follow up on your course, your original question, Bill. So, with your recommendation of a separate department, exact recommendation, is there a different 2080 organization with Metro that you would, and that you should model this new organization after?
The one that we've seen and that everybody has recommended to us as best of all systems. Because they have Westcom, Westcom, right, they have five agents. And they have, that's, that's, most of them. Those, it's almost like they enterprise fund. But they have a board made up of the members of each of the... Rust.
Yeah. Yeah, I think my biggest concern with that is I don't, I have concerns about having a president. And we have, we have workforce. And so, that ability, obviously, the people who are on that board should be cost-conscious, and they should be, but I also know that people tend to be kind of captive of, of being committed your own, right? And everybody kind of becomes an advocate. So, that's my concern. I, I, I think, approach that I feel is an approach that builds on the current Fire Board. Maybe it's sort of like a personal practice on having them play a role in, in kind of, they come, they are, they come to the council and kind of, and talk about. But, but the councils, the whole city still have the ability to kind of have independence, and have the ability to make the final. I do, I don't like the, I'd like this to build off, I think this going back to your original option. I, I don't like status quo, just being, acting status quo, for three years, recently, needs to be able to, if I continue the relationship, then it needs to be a longer three years, is, we can't make decisions on equipment. But I, I do think there's, and I think it's almost from a big picture, do you think, do you think there's benefit for us continuing to work? That's sort of the first question. I, you know, I, I can't, we can't answer that for you, you can't answer it for us, we just have to kind of make that decision. But if we decide, yes, we want to continue to operate, then what's the way to structure? And what is the current, the current problems that exist with the actual operation? And to me, it's not about structure, it's more about making sure that leadership has, has the support that they with strategic planning or coordination to move forward.
I appreciate those comments. One of the issues with the Westcom model, in and of itself, is different from the other scenario that you had, that one city just takes over, that's a build up to, to Westcom, albeit, there's somewhat happening. I think, I think that each committee has a senior identity required for us. Their identity placed at that, so that's what makes that perhaps important. I guess in my mind is that the, the recommendation and the model for that is very similar in reality to one of your non-recommendations, which would be that we just contracted out. But, very much appreciated.
I might suggest, you have some more questions? We didn't do, we didn't do a great deal of hearing depth, right? We're not reinventing the wheel level of recommendations, but I think there is, I think so. How do they, to get that, how do these, how do they really keep the best people?
And Chris, I think we all appreciate that we would need to understand that concept. I think one of the recommendations right up front, and that is, and I hadn't, I frankly hadn't really thought about this before, and that is that we need to do some planning, as, as communities that go down this road together, we really do need to sit down and do some strategic planning around what, you know, how, how we make this work between us, so that we can have that more long-range vision of what we want to be when we grow up in this. You know, I think that's something that, even if we don't do anything else here, that's something that's absolutely... And thank you for bringing that to our...
More to go, I think that's a very good point, something I would point out though. I, I like how you're talking about that would solve one part of that problem, but there was that whole other big half, which is that billing and operations, which has got to manage, it's got to be a night for Chief, the other staff, and there's nothing to solve it.
Specifically, obviously, like, for instance, you have a, like, whether we buy a ladder truck, buy a truck?
Well, so, so you're talking about if we have, or need more, and try to be more involved and give more oversight, that's created on the str, the planning side and all that. But at the end of the day, if it's still separate in terms of, like, they buy a truck, they buy a truck, and then we gotta maintain this truck, then what, how many calls do that truck go off, from Grimes to Johnston? And, I mean, look at the thing, and we're swapping bills every, for all these, you know, there's nothing to fix that.
Well, I, I think what I would do is, is ask a Fire Board to sort of help resolve some, figure out solutions. And obviously, the Chief can bring, can bring forward, okay, here, one of the five, one of the five biggest problems, Chief is out of the, which is a ground, the Fire Board can have the board, have, includes executive officials, and... And the first of those locations, but figuring out ways, we can make those decisions no longer, that basis, especially if we know we've got longer transportation. So I think the Fire Board, the, the crowds, or the, looking at whatever direction that the Fire Chief sort of brings, versus, okay, look, it'd be, it'd be a lot better if they worked off the same thing. Okay, we figure out a way to do, or figuring out how to print those, one of those five issues. But clearly, it doesn't make sense for us to both buy it. So can we figure out a way to, you know, they both have five ladder trucks that are definitely not... So, can we figure out a way, can we figure out a way to solve it? I'm not, I'm not this one, I'm not on the Fire Board for our community, but I, I have faith in the folks who are to bring forward solution. But for me, that's, that's, I, I, what I, what I don't have faith in, or I have concerns about. Before we, before we get to the point where, where you don't have the, well, that's, that they have to involve the entire council. Here's your budget, here's, here's your proposal.
You have those concerns with metro waste.
Um, well, I think that's a little different, you know. I think metro waste, and I think when you, when you're talking about two communities, you're talking fifteen communities, it's a different situation. And I, and I think frankly, the benefit of, that you be able with metro waste for, or DARD, it kind of off, it, it, it's more of a trade-off. But if it's just two communities, I think it's...
That's fair.
Other questions about the report?
I think one thing that I'm gonna take away from this, that in the short term, the Fire Board, and I am on the Fire Board, like I said, I feel like we need to, I'm just gonna say, do a better job of supporting the Fire Department. But on the other hand, when I consider how many boards I'm on, and how many meetings we have to do, it's, it's a, it's a juggle that is difficult to make. So like, if I, if I, you know, say that we're gonna meet every month, and I'm gonna commit more time to it, to reading the reports and meeting with people and visiting the fire station, something else is gonna, gonna drop. There's no solution to that, I'm just saying. It's tough, whereas maybe having a committed directing board for us to take some of that effort off of it, although we asked for this job by going out and... I'm just making a statement here, there's no solution to this.
I, I think that's a great point, I mean, I think, you know, certainly, as we do that with, with, with metro waste or any of the other, that's the same challenge we've got, is that it's hard, when you, you're hard enough kind of bearing all of your, your, your formal day, and you have the council, then you tack on top of that, serving on some of these other boards, and it is hard to do. However, so, I mean, I think that you have to really, you know, have faith in your, your, the, the whole team that you've got, that they'll, they'll help identify, and I think having a good... identify, and I think having a consultant coming in, I mean, obviously, one of the things we've learned in just this whole process is are, kind of, this 12 minutes versus how long an actual identifying that as an issue is one of the examples, and one of the benefits of having sort of an outside person come in. Here's what you're doing right, here's what you're not. So, I think there's
But even on that point, what we're hearing is that that number probably isn't right, I mean
No, exactly, right, right.
And gathering the data, we need to fix it.
The fact that it wasn't that was, that was
No, I think this, I think this entire effort has been very worthwhile. It's brought a lot of issues to our attention. It gives us a lot of, a lot to work from. Food for thought, we're going to have to work through it and see, you know, see where we want to go. But I, you know, I'm going to go back to my statement that I made earlier, we've never had a strategic plan. And we need, we need that, we need, as two communities working on, you know, this this mission together, we need to have a strategic plan, so that we know where we're going for the whole and we haven't had that. I mean, we don't, we have strategic plans for our community. We, you know, we, you know how valuable that is. Wouldn't try we need, we need a strategic plan for our fire
And also a big thank you to all of our fire department members that put in time into this report. Certainly, it was a fun, it was a everyone else providing the input, providing the pros and the cons, and the feedback all the way up the chain that made it I think valuable.
And thank you for recognizing that we are unique and special.
In a positive way.
In a positive way, and that we are doing most things right.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anything else?
I have one quick question, I mean, not related to anything, but one question is, is that the data integrity of the department's reporting system is questionable?
Pardon?
That the data integrity department? Explain to me a little bit more.
Sure. So, when you evaluate times, as far as how a fire department performs, you evaluate times based on, how long does it take a dispatcher to answer a 911 call? How long does it take them to process the call before they send the units out? When they send the units out, how long does it take the people to actually get in a vehicle and respond? How long does it take to actually get there? So, all those things are all broken down at different times. Sometimes that data is automated, sometimes it's manual. So, every step of that, every step of that process, there's a timestamp someplace. It's those timestamps that are messed up. And so, therefore, is the timestamp because a firefighter is not pushing a button on a computer? Is the timestamp because a dispatcher is not pushing a button? Are they not answering the phone? Is the software not recording the time when it should be recording, when it should be recording? Are those kinds of things are the things that you would expect to see as a normal, that this is what we need in order to do it? And that's the data that's missing. So, the time that a unit went out of the station may not be in there. The time that they arrived on the scene may be not in there, when they're doing the reports at the end of the call. So, what is it that's causing those times to be missing? Because if you're missing a time, rather than having a four-minute response time, the software could be saying it's an hour and a half because you never showed up. Or it could say, you know, when our dispatch times are high because the dispatch time didn't get stamped or time punched, and now, now the first time you have is the time the unit arrives on the scene from the time you answer the call. And so, all of those things need to be there to get all those statistics, and the times are missing. Not all, not all of them, but enough to, to, to say to us, something is wrong. And we discovered it when we went back and looked at the data, because their practices, there was nothing unusual or out of the ordinary with what they were doing.
It was showing us to being 25 cents
Yeah, I think if I remember correctly, the average response time for a fire was 12 and a half minutes.
That doesn't build much confidence in our community.
No, no, and it said, the demographics of the community and their practices don't align with that.
It should be an eight to nine minutes.
Not even, less than that.
Chief, you're beginning to embark on analysis of that though already. If I remember correctly, you did that at our
Well, I can say a question, so, if the data is not correct, then we are responding in supposed to be five, four minutes, now we're responding in four minutes, that that says does that make our assumption of how much staff we have, everything else screwed up?
If you, if you, it depends on if you were to act on that data. If you acted on the data, and you said, hey, our response time is 12 minutes in order to do that, then we need more fire stations. We need more people. So, right, excuse me?
But we haven't acted on.
Exactly.
That's how the conversation is often
And so, so I think until you act on that data, and I don't think the chief is making any recommendations based on the data, he wholeheartedly agrees that this is not right.
So, what they're So, the data that you said you're not recommending, I mean, you're not actually acting on that data that we have that's screwed up. But we should, we're supposed to be acting on it, that, to make sure that we have the right amount of staff and everybody, but what data is that?
So, the data, the data that you're saying, in absence of that data that's there, what do we do to make decisions on? The data would be different, and that would be, you know, practices and gut feeling, and more subjective than objective.
Chris, I want to respectfully disagree though too, we don't have to act on gut feeling to a great extent, because some of the data that we have, only can't get to the minute of those response. I know that the chief prepared a wonderful report for our city council last week, talking about concurrent calls. And I think to some extent, whether or not you respond three minutes later than expected average or not, the fact when you have multiple service entities out on a call, you begin to shorten staff and shorthand the entire district. So, I think we have, and your analysis helped even bring that concurrent analysis, current call analysis, right? So, I think that's where we need to
I would, I would also say that the data may be something that is easily modifiable and simple. If it depending, depending on what it is, I think the issue isn't just so much the passwords going forward. How do we make sure this doesn't happen again? And if it's a software issue, obviously, that brings the vendor into play. That brings in some techies that are behind the 911 center and figuring out why it is. Are other departments experiencing the same problem? If they are, is it that big of a deal, and who pays? So, there's a lot of that that goes in there. If it's something simple, where a firefighter is just not entering his time, he has much more ability to say, we're going to do this, and we're going to change this immediately. So, it really depends on what he's able to find and what the source of it is.
That's harder for, the 911 system, we don't manage. So, that's harder for us to change the practices.
And I would say that this is a pretty significant part of their job, if they can't get it right.
It wouldn't be just us there and they have the problem. If it is
My takeaway is that this is beginning of a conversation, the end of a conversation, but a lot of data to parse through, a lot of things to look at, areas that improve the current structure that we have in place, but also recommendations that the communities will have to take through to figure out which course of action, or respective communities, if it's necessary, but then jointly, as mayor, dear, and fellow, like, now what can we do together to really strengthen the relationship? Or maybe do that. A lot more discussion
Thank you for your good work on this, and
Thank you for
You've created more work for us, so that's something the council, when Martin was looking forward to. We'll get, we'll get there. Got a couple sitting around the table here, and all given by good purposes, so thank you. We are a germ.
No, I should have money for we could, we could incite the council. So, we're heading to Van Deed, if anybody's interested.